Welcome everyone to the Board meeting of the Pender County Board of Education on November the first, two thousand and twenty-two. We determined there's a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Smith, will you lead us in prayer, followed by pledge allegiance?
Let's pray. Gracious God, grant us wisdom, and then grant us the good sense to follow it. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Senator. More members, you have had a chance to review the agenda. I know there is one.
Mr. Chair, may I make an amendment to the agenda to add on information? Seven point five air mark slash personnel, please.
Mr. Smith has made a motion to amend the agenda to add seven point five air mark slash personnel. Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now is there a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Hall has made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Montana is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board members. Recognitions.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I have the honor to come before you this evening to participate in recognizing one of the elite programs in our high school, in our district. For those of you that don't know, I'm a very patriotic person, I love our country. As you can tell, I'm wearing my American tie tonight. But I would like to say that I think two professions in our country that keep our nation great are the United States military and public education. The JRTC programs across this district, state, and our country help maintain the great nation that we have. We have an elite high school JRTC program here among us. The Pender High School JRTC male Raider Team won first place overall and finished third in best of the best qualifier in early October. The event was held in Pilot Mountain. The mixed team won overall first place out of sixteen teams and in doing so, has qualified for the regional competition in March of two thousand and twenty-three. The team will actually leave Friday from Alina, Georgia to compete for the national championship. At this time, I would like to introduce Lieutenant Colonel Willie Thems and Sergeant Major David Shaw.
Well, just we'd like to appreciate, we'd like to thank you for recognizing the cadets. Sergeant Major Shaw is the coach of the team, and I'm just the senior army instructor. I go along, I provide motivation, keep the parents informed, but he is the one that trains them and makes sure they do well at the competitions. So, thank you.
One thing I see about these kids, since July, in preparation for national, we have been, kids been getting up at five o'clock in the morning and going to practice at six, then taking a shower and going to school. These seven kids, cadets here, and about thirteen more. So, we're taking seventeen kids on Friday, charter trucks will pick up, take them down to Georgia, and we're gonna compete against the best in the nation.
At this time, I will introduce the cadets. Cadet Austin Anderson. Two cadets from the team who are unable to join us this evening are Christian Cruz and Sam Wheeler. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Ready, one, two, three? One, two, three? You sure you want to do it?
I think that's better.
Is it already on?
Yes.
She doesn't have one.
[laughter]
[inaudible]
That's dirty.
Sorry, I don't have a soon lens. Caroline, lean back just a little bit there. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, John.
Congratulations.
Is that all the recognitions, boys?
Unfortunately, too much attention has been paid on low-performing schools and everything that has been going on in the state of North Carolina. However, we have a group of schools that have not only met, but they've exceeded growth. So tonight, we'd like to recognize those principles. If you'd come forward as I call your name. Topsail High School, Dr. Laria Obita, met growth. Topsail Annandale Elementary School, Principal Melissa Wilson. South Topsail Elementary School, Principal Jennifer Angel. Surf City Elementary School, Principal Brian Allen. And Surf City Middle School, Principal Heather Bridgers. And the following three schools not only met growth, but they exceeded expected growth. From Pender Early College, Principal Kristy Brown.
Kristy Brown had another name, but I'm here for her. Thank you.
CF Pope Elementary School, Principal Stephen Buchanan. There were also two schools that met growth, but due to their proficiency rating, fell below accreditation standards. But would April Perkins, please come up, from Rocky Point Elementary? And let me get this out of your way.
Yes. I'm gonna ask you guys to kind of tell. Yeah, you go on the right, I'll go off.
Hi, baby.
He's still in the, sorry. Still in the middle.
Hi. How you doing, Laria?
Your whole breath, it just rhymes.
You're kidding.
And if you'd hold up one second, there was one other school that also met growth. Would Ms. Sonia Oates, Principal at Cape Fair Elementary, please come up?
Cindy, slide us a little bit, Beth, come over here, sir. Thank you.
Ready, two? Howdy, thanks.
Thank you.
We are now to the public comment section. I have a little script here to read for public comment. The Pender County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students to voice complaints, concerns, compliments about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, and the quality of educational programs or school facilities. According to Board Policy twenty-three-ten, presentation is limited to the maximum of three minutes. Obscure, vulgar, or profane statements, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Patricia Coolidge.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening. My name's Patricia Coolidge, I'm from Task, FX Task Force two-point-O, I'm an extension of Lieutenant Mark Robinson's original platform to try to get certain education out, and indoctrination out of our schools, and that includes some of the books that are in our school. I have done an extensive research, I have extensive literature, which I think will find very helpful for our book committee. There's times I come up here pretty angry, with some of the things I've seen in the school and heard in the school, and some of the books that I've read. First I went through, I cried. This is sensitive material. I'm not gonna read it, so don't worry about that. My whole point is, my heart is with these children, and I know that most of the teachers, principals here do their very best. I know they hear rumors of books being in their schools. I have the proof they're in our schools. We have a floor mat with Moms for Liberty that allows us to get a hold of a lot more literature than most people are able to. We work with BookLooks.org, and there is a list of materials on that website. If you go on it and you click on that book, you go to Destiny File, you search it, it will bring up a description of what's exactly in that book, page by page. So, one book might have five pages, and another have ten pages. And in there, you will find explicit materials of rape, incest, bodily fluids, sisters watching, sisters get raped by their father, very detailed. So it's gonna take a very special kind of person to read these books. I had to get on my knees and I had to pray every time I got through one. It was disturbing. My goal is to educate, to inform, because I think people just don't believe that that's even possible to happen here. I didn't believe it either, but the more I looked and the more I read, the more I knew what work we needed to do. Yes, I was mad at each and every one of you, and you all know that. But here in chapter one fifteen C, the law clearly states, you have choices you can make. You can make committees, which my understanding you're ready to do. It also states here, if you find them inappropriate or even vulgar, very careful words here, persuasively vulgar or inappropriate any way, shape, or form, you have the authority all by yourself to say, hey, we're not having this, based on your beliefs. I know that we're in a situation where we wanna look at the LGB. This is not LGB, I promise you it's not. I have LGB in my family, I have friends, I have actually a coworker who works with me side by side. She's, she's gay lesbian, she reads these things, she says, she feels as though they're using the gay and lesbian to go ahead and get these books in the school. There's nothing funny about taking a two-year, a second grader, and trying to chop their genitals off, because this is where these books are leading to. So, I thank you, I think I'm over time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm over time. So, I'm looking forward to working with the book committee, I have all the information we need. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Groves.
I promise I'm not reading tonight. I'm here to convey about a book that I read, Identical, by Ellen Hopkins. I'm here as a state-certified peer support specialist, mental health, advocate for those with mental health issues, diagnoses, and people that suffer from substance use disorder. This book in particular was about a young girl who was molested by her father. Wait, by the father, sister, very explicit details. I couldn't read it if I wanted to. When I tell you that if there is a person in this community, and there's plenty of them, that have went through these type of incidences, gets a hold of this book, it's beyond triggering, it'll bring them way back. The worst part of it in the book, not that there is a worst part, but a very bad part of the book was, she did these acts with her father in exchange for drugs, including OxyContin. That's a subject you don't wanna go toe-to-toe with me with, you really don't. To have a child read a book that shows that's a coping mechanism for something so tragic is not acceptable in any way, shape, or form. Last time I was here, I explained the Miller standard and the three-pronged, I wanna go on just a little bit more. The First Amendment does have limitations, especially for children, and I wanna go over the general statute here, fourteen nineteen thirteen, harmful to minors is law, which is conveying sexual, in writing, explicit conduct, erotic pornography, sexual activity, masturbation, bodily fluids, on and on. Under the Department of Justice, this is federal, eighteen USC fourteen sixty, possession with intent to sell obscene matter on federal property is against the law. Eighteen USC fourteen sixty-one mailing, so from point A to point B, is a violation of federal law, under the Department of Justice website. Eighteen USC one forty-six, transporting for distribution. Okay, I want you to hear this, this is federal, distributing this. Doesn't matter if it's from her to me, me to a kid, that's distribution. I want to go to eighteen USC fourteen seventy, transfer obscene material to a minor. If you need the legal definitions of obscenity, harmful material, I have them all. You can call me, you guys have my number, get up with me on Facebook. Case of American Booksellers versus Webb nineteen ninety clearly shows that this is not a violation of a First Amendment right. Thank you.
Ms. Groves.
Mike Corn. Okay, I got volunteered, no notes. My name, my name is Mike Corn, and I got up here at the last minute. I'll say something briefly, brief things, and get to the point. Chapter fourteen, one ninety, great, you guys, your attorney and everybody said, has said how you guys are exempt, that's great. They never said that it's not illegal, number one. Number two, I congratulate you for using thirty-two hundred for your parents and to be able to discuss what's objectionable. You notice I said objection, objectionable, not pornographic. Pornographic can be taken care of at one ninety, all right? Point one. Number three, Trey Allen. Trey Allen's exceptional attorney running for Superior Court, you know that. He did a brief. In his brief, he states that you guys, every one of you, if you knowingly distribute the pornography under federal law, if you knowingly are distributing this, and you don't do anything about it, but you knowingly distributing it, you're subject to a million-dollar lawsuit. Million-dollar lawsuit. I've got the copy of what Trey Allen wrote when he was at UNCW, when he did his brief there, right? And he's running for Superior Court judge. God help you people if you get before him at the Superior Court. Now, like I said, I gave your attorney a little bit of credit, yeah, for twisting the law and saying you guys are immune, but you're not immune, it's not illegal, it's illegal, period. It doesn't, immunity doesn't make it not illegal. Immunity from prosecution does not make it not illegal. You cannot be prosecuted, great. You can't be prosecuted under the federal law either, but you can certainly be answerable with a civil lawsuit, and it says it right in there, one million dollars federal lawsuits. You think we're not watching this really closely and getting some really good help behind this? Yes, we are. And I give credit to a couple of the school boards and people that have responded. Thank you very much. I give credit to the couple that have responded. Mr. George, I appreciate you communicating, I'm not gonna say anything else, all right? I still have not gotten my apology from you for defamation of character, but I appreciate you communicating, all right? I'm not gonna spill the beans on that. I have nothing more to say, I think I made my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corn. Information agenda, seven point one, school survey discussion. Mr. Hall, your name is beside that item?
Yeah, this is about, this is just a couple of questions I've got about the school survey, and I've, Dr. Bracy, you can probably answer them, as well as anyone. This most recent survey that went out, I realized that it was optional. I guess I've had an awful lot of people contact me that had a problem with it, and I, I just wonder if there's a way in the future that we could, as a board, review surveys before they go out, or something of that, you know, something of that neighborhood here. Is that a? Is that a definite? Is there any, I mean, is there any logistical reason we can't? I know sometimes things come quickly.
Right. Any, there's nothing that I'm aware of.
No service at all. I mean, surveys are planned, orchestrated events, if the board wants to see them before they go out.
So, I don't know if that's something that we need to put into policy, or if we can just have an understanding about it, and I guess when the new superintendent comes, we probably should just have a discussion on that again, I guess in January would be probably the most appropriate thing to do, so.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, unless, that's all I had, unless anybody else has got any comments or questions on it, so.
I've got a question. When these surveys that are sent out, they come from DPI?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the surveys are able to be modified by us if we wanted to add or take away anything from them?
Well, to a degree, right? There are certain, there are certain ones that you can't necessarily mess with, but generally speaking, you should be able to modify, for the most part, most of the surveys. The ones I'm particularly thinking about, the ones that are pass-throughs from the federal government, their questionnaires, those you don't really have much of a say in, you have to send those out as-is, because they go into their database. But most of the states, there is some wiggle room. Generally speaking, I haven't reviewed any of the surveys recently, but I think it's a good practice to get into, to at least know what's going out under your heading, so.
You can do that. Thank you.
All right, that's all I have.
Board members? So, discussion of Policy 3210, Section B, Community Media Advisory Committee. I asked for this to be put on the board, just so we could start this process. Kind of laid back on it, but this is my last meeting, official meeting as board chair, possibly be a new board chair in December. But if we look at Section B, these are the things that us, we as a board, need to make nominations for. Some of them are set, who's going to be, do what. The Community Media Advisory Committee shall be composed by members appointed by the board. The superintendent or his or her designee, that's pretty much a given. The district technology director, that's a given. The district director of digital learning and media, that's a given. A media coordinator, this is where it becomes where we need to make recommendations of who we want, and as a board decide how, either we pick them from the schools, or they're not volunteer, and then we take the list and pick from that. But I would like to see, you know, spread across the county of every school, every opportunity for everybody. So, number four is a media coordinator from each level of school within the system, middle, elementary, middle and high school. A principal from every level of school in the system. A parent from each level of a school within the system. So that doesn't mean a parent from each school, that means it'd be three parents, one from each level across the county, and a high school student from one of the four high schools. So if we could get those, if you could start thinking about those and make a list and solicit the volunteers at the school, so we can get that nailed down hopefully next month for our part of the committee. There's more to this policy that's on the schools to perform. We'll leave that, that's their, the principals, that's their part of the process. If they have a complaint, then they form their committees. So that's them, and this is our part. And that's all, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that's something that we are responsible for doing, and we need to get it done, so we can have our committee in case there is a hearing that needs to be had, instead of trying to rush at the last minute. Is there any questions, comments, board members?
Yes. How are we going to get the word out to parents? Are we going to perform an all-call? Will each school be responsible for sending out flyers? I mean, how are we going to get the word out to parents that we are looking for parents to serve in these positions?
We can, Beth, talk through that in cabinet, either with Bob. We can get with principals to see the best method to get the parents involved in that process. So we can either do an all-call through Bob, or we can have each principal solicit those parents of interest, and then we could choose from those to make the district committee.
And we've been talking about this committee now for a while. Can we kind of put a rush on this?
We can have it at the December board meeting.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you.
You bet.
Any more comments on this discussion, board members? If not, Mr. Taylor, HVAC planning update.
Good evening again. I just wanted to bring the board up to date on where we are with the Cheetum report. As you can see, the binder there, we have one of those for each of the members of the maintenance and operations teams who's reviewing this. We did obtain a cumulative set of recommendations, which are approximately $12.4 million. Some of these recommendations are things that make our job easier in maintenance. So the next seven days, we will be spending going through each school to determine the cost-benefit analysis. Obviously, we want to make the biggest impact, improving the comfort in our schools and improving the indoor air quality. So I just wanted to let you know where we are. Obviously, we need to trim down the $12 million to the 3.8 or 9 that we have allocated from Essers fundings for the specific purpose of HVAC upgrades. Any questions?
Any questions on that part of it, board members? I know this is on here, but can you just give us a quick update on our progress at Thompson Middle School?
Thompson Middle, oh yes, sir. Today, we notified Mr. Lawrence that he can return students to one of the classrooms in the 700 wing, and the other classroom should be coming tomorrow, the next day. Again, by the end of this week, all students will be back in the 700 wing. We currently have completed the 600 building, or A building, it's referred to a couple of different ways, with the duct cleaning. The team finished on Friday night, Saturday morning of last week, and now they're in the 700 building. Again, it's taken almost a week to go through each facility, going up into the air handlers and things of that nature, and moving through that process. So we're on, we're ahead of time repairing those outside walls and doing the indoor wall repairs and things of that nature, but it's going to take about two more weeks to finish the duct cleaning. And again, that company has been very accommodating. We greatly appreciate them working with us. Their personnel are working a full day, and then they're coming, spending four or five hours in the evenings when school has been dismissed in each of those buildings, and plus on Saturdays.
Do we have any idea when the rest of the reports will be for the other schools?
We received a couple today. I think we're getting really close to have all the indoor air quality reports, but I can give you an update tomorrow. I apologize for not having that this evening.
That's fine. And can we post those, Bob, as we go?
The only modification, well, we are making a modification to the reports by removing the school map, just for school safety purposes. We've been asked to remove maps from the schools by law enforcement, of course, it's just good safe practice.
That's great. Any other questions on that, board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. Mr. Taylor, it's, we're very appreciative of all the work you and your team have put into this and expedite, and we've asked several things of you in the past week or two, and we really appreciate how quickly you've gotten on this, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I will share that with the team.
7.4, I guess this is you two?
Yes, sir.
Requesting reimbursement for CDL.
Right. The next section deals with the reimbursement for the CDLs, again, trying to, you know, make a positive impact with the employees, particularly the bus drivers. There is a reimbursement policy already, or a regulation already in place, but we realized the regulation wasn't being handled completely the same across the board, so we're just trying to rectify that with the amendment to move to increase the reimbursement for the full license. It'll be about a $1,000 impact overall per year.
So I'm assuming we're treating this as a first reading, is that?
That's, that's what we've laid out in the agenda. However, the board can do what it'd like to, just to rectify it.
Does it need to be moved up to action tonight, or is it going to wait till the December? I mean, that's, it's all information, so we can't move on it in that part. It's more like a first reading. But if it needs to be moved, then we can see if someone will make a motion to move it to action. Does it need to be moved?
Ms. Nowland says yes. Please, if possible.
So we can move it down to?
Item 8.?
7, 8.
Make it 8.8.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add on 8.8. The request for reimbursement for CDL license requirement revision.
Mr. Smith's made the motion to add that to the action agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so we'll see you back here in a few minutes.
All right, sir. One more, one more information item. This afternoon, we have Mr. Justin Cruz, the district manager, soon to be VP of Airmark in the region. We'd like for him to present to you our new staff members who will be coming on board, some who are already on board. This time, Mr. Cruz?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be added at the last moment. I wanted to give you a little background on kind of where we are from a personnel standpoint, as well as some of the shifts and some of the changes, and kind of some reasoning behind that. As you all know, Jennifer Markin has been the general manager for Airmark. She started back with, back in Pender County in December of 19, and then COVID happened, and kind of everything went up in the air. She was supporting Vernon Tanner at the time. A year ago, Vernon Tanner moved over to Airmark in the sports entertainment side, working at Virginia Tech, where he still works and misses K-12 every day in a lot of ways, especially with the nights and the weekends. So if you ever see Virginia Tech at home, just know that Vernon is running around there somewhere in that stadium. Jen, you know, assumed his role, and we provided, you know, a backfill for Jen's position there. Over the past, you know, year, year and a half, a lot of things have happened in Jen's personal life, including the loss of a brother-in-law, the loss of a godmother, and just a lot of things are pulling her back home. And home for Jen is in western Pennsylvania, just north of Pittsburgh, to where, you know, she, after the, after the loss of her godmother, she kind of approached me and addressed our team, bless you, at Airmark for, is there any opportunity to move back closer home? You know, just, you know, she has a sister now who, you know, overnight became a single parent and has two nieces, and she misses a lot of things, to where we were able to find Jen a home, to where Jen did make a transfer. But during, during that time when she came to me, I reached out to this same lady here, you know, who has a ton of experience on the teaching side. So this is Amanda Burnett. Amanda Burnett is going to assume the general manager role, and the, you know, my thought process here at least is, you know, in Pender County, we need somebody that understands North Carolina, that lives here, that's grown up here. Amanda graduated from UNC Pembroke and went directly into teaching. Actually, I think she graduated early to go into teaching. So she's taught in elementary schools, and I think the thought process, for me at least, is, from an Airmark perspective, we need somebody that understands what it's like to be, you know, in your buildings and kind of going, understand what your teachers are going through, especially from a food service lens. You know, Jen did a lot of good things, but a lot of those, you know, she came at from an operating lens, from a food service lens, because that's all she had worked in, especially, you know, on the food side. You know, Amanda's experience working on both, both ends, I think is going to help, especially like with the relationship building, relationship building at the building level, but also making sure that we're addressing some things that, you know, students are seeing and, you know, again, having that empathetic ear, you know, because she did it for 10 years. So I wanted to introduce Amanda to you all, and then also kind of make you aware that we are, we do have a posting out there for chef manager, as Patrick Swope is going to work in healthcare. So he is, you know, going to relocate over to Smithfield and work in the, I guess, the Wake?
Medical?
Yeah. I was going to say, like, that medical system there, to where we are going to be replacing that position here. You know, our goal is to, you know, keep the support systems that we brought in as tight as possible, and to make sure that we have, you know, those roles that we added and keep those, you know, moving forward. Amanda has already reached out to Jen, and Jen is still a resource for us, as well as Vernon, just, you know, for some of the intricacies to where how things worked in prior years, or why do we do things this way? And, you know, and one of the jobs I tasked Amanda with was to push back on those things, right? You know, the saying, you know, we've always done it this way. Well, if you've always done it this way, you know, maybe there's something that we need to change and do different. So I do want to introduce Amanda to you guys this evening and give her an opportunity to speak and say hi.
Hi. I just want to say that I'm excited to join this district. It's been a learning process already, it's been a week, but I'm excited to continue developing relationships, not just with my cafeteria staff, but with everybody in the school buildings, the school board, across, you know, we're all a team, we're all here to serve the students. We all want the best for the students. So that's what I'm coming in it with. I do want to honor a lot of the things that Jen has done, but I also want to offer a lot of new opportunities. So I'm really excited to do that with you guys.
The one, the one big takeaway, at least, with Amanda coming in with that different look and different lens, is just, you know, making sure, to her point, you know, she's honoring those things, but also pushing and moving it forward, right? And doing it with an empathetic heart for, for the teachers, as well as for our students, so kind of balancing both. And so, in about a month from now, my hope is that we'll be introducing you to the new chef here as well, as the posting's already out, and making sure that we are, you know, communicating out just any of those, you know, kind of shifts and changes, because obviously, from a chef perspective, every chef tastes things differently, has a different view, but we want to make sure we reel them in as much as possible. Were there any questions for myself or for Amanda coming aboard?
Welcome. Any questions, board members? Welcome to Pender.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. George, really quick, I inadvertently gave you the wrong item number. The action agenda actually starts at number nine, not at number eight. We moved it to consent at 8.8. You can certainly vote on it as part of consent, but you can certainly move it. Okay.
I just leave it at consent.
I just, I want, I wanted to make sure.
Mr. Taylor won't have to come back up, man.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to bring your attention to it.
So, board members, we are at the consent agenda, and we have an amendment to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve with the amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rollins made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are clicking right along here. How about that? Action agenda, foundations level three kits purchase.
Good evening again. At the April 12th board meeting, Dr. Bracy presented the Elementary Science of Reading Plan that outlined how Pender County would implement DPI's requirements for the letters training and new literacy standards. And this was what was shared at that meeting. At that meeting, year-one items were approved that included Lexia Contract, the pre-K2 teacher kits, and the Geodes decodable books. Tonight, I'm requesting approval to purchase the grade-three teacher kits, student materials, and professional development outlined in the year-two plan that was presented in April.
So, board members, we need a motion for the total of $136,704, $136,404 to be paid out of Essers Three funds.
Make that motion.
Ms. Burns has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Fontana has made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We're down to the comments from board members. Record time. We'll start, I'll start on that. I'll start on Mr. Smith's end.
Thank you, Gardner Aitken. I see you're, I know you have a birthday coming up this month, I believe, so congratulations on that, and it looks like you're surviving pretty well at your new school that you're serving as assistant principal, so happy birthday to you. You serve, have a birthday with Ms. Burns, who's on the board. I think hers is on the 18th, if my memory serves correct. And then Mr. Bob over here, he's got a birthday this month, on the 8th, 9th, okay? Sorry about that. So, happy birthday to you three, and if there's anyone in the crowd that I left out, I apologize. But I do know of those three, and so I want to say happy birthday. I try to do that. I want to just take a few moments of your time, if it's okay. few moments of your time, if it's okay. There was a starry-eyed young boy who wanted to teach history, and so he decided what he would do is he needed to go to college to do it. And in doing, doing that, he decided he would go to Florida Atlantic to get a degree in history. Well, that wasn't enough for him because he loved education, so he pursued his master at UNCW. And still, because of his educational desire to achieve more for himself and his family, he went on to NC State to get his doctorate degree. He's worked in school systems like Beaufort County, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Hyde County, and lastly, as he gets ready for his retirement, Pender County Schools. This is individual that helped guide us during the hurricanes. He was there whenever parents and children and people that had lost their homes, he was helping to do that in the gyms. Sometimes he got the credit and sometimes even the blame for things that went right or wrong, even if it was justly so. But he never complained about those things. During COVID, he stepped up when none of us knew exactly how COVID was to be dealt with, because we, even though we know hurricanes, we didn't know COVID at the time. But he was able to step up and do so much behind the scenes and never ask for credit, and very many times never got the credit that he deserved. He is someone that is a colleague to many of you, but most importantly, there's a title that I give him other than colleague, and that is probably the one I have the most pleasure of using for him, and that is friend. He truly has been a friend. Whenever I can't get up with anyone else, my wife will say, why don't you call him? Normally, he'll answer his phone. So I don't know if that means he doesn't have a personal life, or, or, or if he just loves what he does. At the end of this month, I will end his educational career in Pender County. I don't think it'll end his educational career because that's how he's born and bred, I believe, just wanting to do what's best for kids, and he's done so. Tonight, it's with extreme honor and privilege that even though I know that he'll get very upset for me doing all of this, but it is my honor tonight to recognize truly one of the pillars of Pender County Schools, and that's Todd Blumright, Dr. Blumright. That's all I have.
Mr. Hall?
I just wanted to say the same. Thank you, Todd, for what you've done. And I'm not an orator as Ken is, so I'll keep this much shorter, but just thank you for what you've done.
Ms. Burns?
The same goes here, Dr. Blumright. Anytime I've needed to have any question answered, I've always been able to call you, and you've always given me an answer, and I thank you for that, and given me direction a lot of times. Like Mr. Hall said, I'm not an orator. I can't put it as eloquently as Mr. Smith did, but it, the same feeling is there. Thank you. Back in 2018, myself, Ms. Fontana, and Mr. Smith ran for this Board of Education. Ms. Fontana and I met and quickly became friends. And I cannot begin to tell you what a wonderful four years it's been serving with you. Tonight is Ms. Fontana's last meeting with us. And you have become more than just a fellow board member. You've become a member of my family. Your family is part of my family. And I thank you for everything that you've done for me, because you've helped me see, I came at this from a parent's side, and with your experience in Pender County Schools already, you helped me see the other side. And I think a lot of times, our conversations have resulted in a lot of good decisions made for this school system. And I, I thank you. And I'm going to miss you so, so sorely. And that's all, sir.
Ms. Fontana?
My dad has a quote that he uses quite often, and he says, "A person with an experience is never at the mercy of a person with a theory." So in 2018, when I ran, and my platform was, of course, Jordan First, because everybody knows that I've been a teacher, a school administrator, central office, parent, grandparent, yada, yada, yada. I thought, boy, when I come on school, you know, there's going to be some good little changes going on. You know, we'll, we'll do some things, da-da-da. You don't have a clue till you sit in the seat. You don't have a clue. You know, I used to tell parents that if, that, you know, they'd come at me about things, or especially at central offices, and they'd say, well, this principal this, or this principal that. And I said, I'll give you one day in their seat and let you sit. Back up after you start saying and telling what a day in the life of a principal looks like, day in the life of a teacher, day in the life of custodian, day in the life of cafeteria, bus drivers. People don't know until they've sat in the seat. So I learned quickly by listening to board members such as Brad George and Don Hall, who have served several years and several terms. And I quickly learned that I only know one side of things that go on. So to my fellow board members, I would just like to say thank you. It has truly been probably some of the best four years of my entire life being on this board. Now, I would love to tell you that it has been roses and rainbows and unicorns, but it hasn't. It was hard enough coming back from the hurricane, but COVID, there were many times that COVID just could have taken all of us out as a board, because there were so many things that were coming at us, coming at y'all. But at the end of the day, we have to make those decisions. And at the end of the day, I wish we could share some of the joy that we get blamed for on Facebook. But at the end of the day, it was the five of us who continually were blamed and continually fussed at. You know, I've been fussed at before as a principal, been fussed at before as a teacher, been fussed at before as a central office. But being with your children at Walmart and having a parent come at you because you're to blame for what went down and what's going on because of masks, that was an all-time low for me emotionally that day. And when your child looks at you, one of your children, and she says, I don't want to go back to Walmart with you anymore, if that's okay, because that lady was screaming, and I didn't like that. That's when you realize that, yeah, we all catch it. But the five of us sitting up here catch it on a whole different level. So yes, I'm, I'm pushing the chair up for the last time tonight, and I'm walking away, but it's not for good. I'll be back. My goal is to substitute teach, and I am so excited. And yes, there's already a list of principals who've already come to me and said, I need you this, 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 this. I said, y'all gotta wait, man. I'm not even there yet. I haven't filled out my application yet. Give me a few. But I am truly excited about getting back into some schools and just being with kids again. That, that's going to be fun. That's going to be a good time. So thanks to all of you. Thanks to you principals who've been there for me, teachers, media people, parents, everyone. Superintendent, it's Dr. Bracy. Lisa's been great working with you so far. You've done a great job. To all of the cabinet. And Todd, I can say that I learned so much about COVID between you and the nurses and the health department, more than I ever hoped I ever have to know again, because it was a crazy ride, if I do say myself. But thank you so much, so much. And if you're like me, your wife is probably getting a little, having you at home just a little bit more, because I've got some kids and a husband are pretty doggone excited. But to all of you guys, again, thank you. And yes, we are a part of each other's families. There have been things that have happened to all of us, but we've been there for each other and checked on our families. When Jada had her surgery a couple weeks ago, all of you checked, but Don was right there. He blew my phone up several times that day. So she's out surgery yet? Is everything okay? How's it going? And, and I'll never forget things like that. So thank you. Thanks for the ride.
So now I've got to figure out who I called to vent to, because Cindy has been the one for the last four years. She's the one that I've called, the one that, when I can't make sense of some things that's happening or happened or appear to be going to happen. She, she's, she's walked through it with me a lot of times, and I appreciate that. Being her vice chair when she was chair was a great experience, and we're going to miss you. And hopefully you will be back in some form, fashion. And you're just a phone call away, by the way, just so you know. Dr. Blumright, we're going to miss you tremendously. You brought us to a new age. You've got us, we're digital now. When we came on board, you came on board, we were still getting printed copies of the board package. And it was a pain trying to flip through, and he made all that happen, and he's carried that department. Our data department has excelled under his leadership, and you are going to be missed because you do things that, it's kind of like everything, all the little parts and pieces you do, a little bit of everything. And so now someone's going to have to pick that up. So this has been a busy month. We, we introduced our new superintendent. He'll be here January first. I think that's going to be great. He's already started work. He was here Friday with Dr. Bracy. And I think they've communicated several times. So he's, he's already hitting the ground running. We had, I got to attend a great ceremony at Topsail High School on Thursday, the commissioning of the Coast Guard JRTC program. That is something that was exciting for me, is being a grad from Topsail High School, and we never had that program and could never figure out why, you know, we never had it. And to finally get it there and see the excitement that was in there Thursday, they had the whole side of the auditorium with cadets. It was exciting to see. So I'm excited to see where that program leads us in the, in the future. Mr. Taylor, I want to personally thank you and your department. I rode through the parking lot. I rode, walked up on the people working at Topsail High School, and they, what do you want? Who are you? I said, I'm just looking. And, and I've seen a lot of work going on in a short period of time, and that was good to see. And I thank you and your, your crew. They've made a lot of headway there. It was needed, and there's no, no denying that we, you know, we kind of dropped the ball on some things, and, but they're picking it up and running with it, and that's great to see. So I have no other comments. Comments from the board attorney?
So I feel like I, I don't have any legal comments tonight. I'm just going to go ahead and tell you guys, I need to, I need to say some thank yous. I'll, I'll start with the collector of all things, seemingly. Todd, thank you. This is the second school district I've had the opportunity of working with you, and more extensively here than in Hyde County. I have been impressed with how hard you work and how much you put the best interest of children at the North Star of everything you do. Your practical thinking and your ability to pivot and do the things that are necessary at all times, I feel like, is incredible. I appreciate, as Mr. George said, the digitalization of this board's board packet, because by golly, that, that is a feat, getting together a board packet. You guys, I don't know, I mean, I, I think, I think the board knows this, but Todd and I have had a system of putting together board packets that has spent the past two years trying to get it down to a science. And I will say that we have gotten there. And I do appreciate you, and I appreciate all the work you did, from COVID to school improvement plans to school safety issues, you know, ALIS trainings, just anything and everything. And I appreciate you. I appreciate how hard you worked each and every day for the students of Pender County. And my good friend Cindy. Cindy, we, we had a lot of quality time together whenever you were chair. And I, 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 I think that there's never going to be an experience that's going to come close to having to help someone lead a board during COVID. I think this board having to make decisions and having to grapple with all the issues you're dealing with, but you're, the board chair is the chief servant. I don't know that everybody understands that. Because whenever I call the chair, that, the chair then has to communicate with each and every one of them. So it, it's not this great power. It is, is literally the great servant. And I think you embodied that so well, and you did such a good job of listening and hearing and, you know, doing the job of being a good chair. You also have done an exceptional job as a board member, and I appreciate the time that you have served the students of Pender County and your perspective. And just thank you. I appreciate you so much. All right. Mr. Chair, that's, that's it for my comments.
Thank you, sir. A report from the superintendent.
Yes, good evening, folks, board members. Couple of announcements, but I also wanted to echo my sentiments to Todd as well. He's such a bright man, very knowledgeable. I really did have to get used to his sense of humor, though. It's tricky, but I get it. But sometimes it's after the fact. Oh, that's what he meant. Hey, wait a minute. It's not just me, right? But I tell you, he, he's such, he's such a gentleman and a go-getter, a fighter. And whatever task, since we've worked together, he's spot on and he's on it real fast. So I appreciate you for all that you've done in supporting me in this role. And Cindy, thank you for your contribution. Folks probably don't know, but I was a board member in another county in the state, and I had, I went back home to teach where I went to school, where I graduated from, and this community group kind of rallied around me and said, run for school board, run for school board. I don't know what I was thinking, but I only lasted four months. So congratulations. I'll tell you the rest of the story later. Congratulations to you for your work that you've done and the impact you've had on not only the students, but the staff and community as a whole. So thank you for that. Got some really neat news to share with you. It's actually, first time since 2016, all three high schools are in the football playoffs. Heidi Tress High School home versus Eastern Wayne. Caroline, I'm not sure about this. Pender High School at Bertie High School, that's where I graduated from, so I'm going to have to stand in the middle. I'm going to have to stand in the middle. Topsail High School at Cleveland High School. So folks, share those. Congratulations to the coaches and, most importantly, those kids who represent us so well. We wish for the best that they continue on in their playoff journey. Wednesday, November ninth, Exceptional Children's Merry Market at Bergdahl Middle School from ten to two. Really neat opportunity to support the Exceptional Children's Merry Market. Thursday, November tenth, Rocky Point Elementary School Veterans Day Assembly. Friday, November eleventh, schools will be closed in observance of Veterans Day holiday. I understand your planning. As Brad mentioned, Dr. Bree Love and I met last Friday, and folks, you're going to be in great hands. He's such a great leader, coming to us with a phenomenal experience and background, not only as a principal, but currently in his role as chief academic officer. And I think I just want to compliment the board for their selection with Dr. Bree Love. He has a wealth of knowledge. I think you're going to find that he is approachable and also empowers his people to get the work done. Just as he and I share, I always use the compliment of how the team makes me look good. And I want to say that's what you've done for me in this transition role. And I'm very appreciative of that. We will also be working together on November seventeenth, a planning day with Dr. Bree Love, and he's going to be joining our cabinet meeting. Friday, November eighteenth is Vice Board Chair Beth Burns' birthday. Happy birthday early to you.
Thank you.
You truly don't want me to sing to you, so happy birthday. You truly don't want me to sing to you, so happy birthday. Thursday, December 1st and Friday, December 2nd, we'll be representing the district at the superintendent's leadership conference in Greensboro. We have our quarterly meeting there. We're all 115 superintendents across the state, get the latest updates and next things that are happening in the, at the state level. Tuesday, December 13th, we will have committee of the whole at 4:30 and 6 o'clock, regular board meeting. I've already shared my notes about Dr. B's last day. What else do I have? November is National Career Development Month, correct, Mr. Bates? CTE Director Dominique Bates. If you haven't met him, you need to meet him. Proud of the work that he's done and the direction he's taken us with CTE in Pender County schools. Those are my comments, folks. Thanks for all that you do. And folks in the audience, thanks for all that you do as well. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Pender County Board of Education will enter closed session, subject to the advice of the attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A, A1 and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20U.S.C. 1232G and N.C. General Statute 115C-402, to establish, and I'm sorry I had a page break, to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A5, to formulate plans by a local board of education related to emergency response to incidents of school violence or to formulate and adopt a school safety components of school improvement plans by a local board of education or a school improvement team as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A8, and to consider and give instructions to the board's attorney concerning Burns, Fisher versus Pender County Board of Education at all.
So that sounds like the next two hours. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
We're in closed session. Thank you all.
Board members, do we have a motion to approve the HR report as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the HR report as presented.
Ms. Burns has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fontana has made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four over. Board members, is there a motion to approve the closed session minutes and keep those confidential?
I make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes from October and keep them confidential.
Ms. Burns has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero zero. Board members, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to ask Cindy Fontana to make that motion since this is her last meeting.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting.